Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Did not hear from me.
You what?
I haven't heard anything from you.
I think he moved his daughter back to school.
Okay, consent agenda? No, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for whose stance one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just. Consent agenda? Any additions, corrections, or questions?
Just make note that the fireworks permit and the liquor license for Sauerkraut Days is on a consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Okay, public input. This is a time that anybody that wishes to talk about something that is not on the agenda can speak for five minutes. Okay, moving on. Proclamation of American Wind Week.
Want me to read these for you?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay. Whereas Iowa ranks second in the nation for wind power capacity within nearly 9,000 megawatts installed, producing enough electricity to power nearly 2.1 million homes. And whereas Iowa's wind production also ranks second in the nation at 33.7% of all in-state electricity production, with current and future projects estimated to bring wind share of electricity production to over 40% by 2020. And whereas Iowa is home to 114 wind farms and 10 wind-related manufacturing facilities. And whereas wind power is opportunity in cities and communities all across Iowa, resulting in $58 million in state and local tax payments and $20 to $30 million in land lease payments in 2018 alone. And whereas wind farms in Iowa have attracted over $16.3 billion in private investment to date, helping to spur critical investments in communities that fund manufacturing jobs, education programs, and local economic development projects. And whereas the development of wind power now supports nearly 10,000 jobs across the state. And whereas the advancements in wind power will greatly enhance our ability to attract new businesses and talent to our state and community. And wind energy will continue to grow as a major force in the U.S. economy. Therefore, Burl O'Connor, Mayor of Lisbon, does hereby recognize August 11th through the 17th, 2019, as American Wind Week in Lisbon, and encourage Iowans to learn more about wind's impact on our community and celebrate Iowa's leadership in wind energy production.
Okay. The next one. Do we need to vote on these? We don't, do we?
No.
No. Just proclamations.
Request of Ponds Association. Oh, wrong one. Proclamation of Five Seas and Stand Down.
This is another proclamation that we were asked to do. Whereas Lynn County Veteran Affairs, in partnership with the Cedar Rapids Metro Area Veterans Council, the Iowa City VA Medical Center, and the Lynn County Continuum of Care will hold Lynn County's 14th Annual Stand Down for Homeless and Near-Homeland Veterans and Non-Veterans. And whereas Stand Down is a term used in times of war in which exhausted combat units come off the battlefield to rest and recover in a place of safety. And whereas, according to the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs, the first Stand Down was organized in 1988 by a group of Vietnam veterans in San Diego. And whereas today Stand Down also refers to a community-based program that provides assistance for homeless and near-homeless veterans transitioned to community living by providing access to human service agencies, including benefits counseling, Social Security and Veterans, employment and training assistance, eye exam screenings, healthcare screenings, housing services, legal assistance, mental health treatment, and substance abuse counseling. And whereas Stand Downs have been used as an effective tool in reaching out to homeless veterans, nationally reaching more than 200,000 veterans and their family members. Now therefore, I, Burl O'Connor, Mayor of Lisbon, do hereby proclaim September 6th, 2019, as the 14th Annual Five Seas and Stand Down Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impacts of this event to assist veterans and express gratitude to those who have served and continue to serve.
What's the date on that? August what?
No, that one is September 6th.
Okay. Request from Sauerkraut Days to close streets and use city facilities. Jerry?
Hi, gang. Jerry, it's Sauerkraut Days, I know all of you. Standard request, there are two changes from last year. One is our carnival campground is still under construction, so ask if they stay back by Diamond 3 and 4. That's always been kind of our reserve request each year, but obviously with construction progress and a little bit of rain on that dirt, it could have been a little bit of a mess up there, so would like to use that space. Fireworks back at City Park, obviously with the school construction, there's some opportunities there. We found a spot to store the rides, but I don't think we want to watch fireworks from the back lot of Rico Crown. That would be a little interesting. Other than that, it's the standard. Street closure same times, same blocks. I've already coordinated with city staff for barricades. I think a lot of them got out today with the rain. Got a lot of that out. We got the concrete blocks mostly out, so really that's it. If you guys have any questions for us, I'll at least read all three pages to you aloud.
Anybody have any questions for?
I don't.
Need a motion to approve that?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Request from Ponds Association to pay for half of repairs. Is that this gentleman back here?
Danny Solomon is here tonight to speak with you. He also handed out a letter that you guys should have in front of you. There are a set of pictures. I didn't make copies of those, but if you could pass those back and forth so you'll understand what he's talking about. And there's also two copies of a map up there that you can look at to see a bigger picture of where the ponds are that he's going to be talking about tonight. Everybody get a chance to read the letter. Do you need a few minutes to do that? I already read the letters.
So what size of pipe you got in there right now?
In that upper, we have two dams. All right, we replaced the last dam, the lower dam, two years ago. We have to replace the dam. This is the second time we have to replace this dam. There is no pipe in it at this time. It's basically was set up to run over a cement spillway. It has undermined that and basically runs underneath the cement spillway now. We're proposing two 24-inch pipes, 20-foot long, to put, tear off the undermined area, which is going to be about close to 20 feet. And put in two 24-inch pipes, cover that with clay, and spill down to part of the existing dam now with concrete. The sewer pipe, the city sanitary sewer pipe, I believe Travis knows about this. I believe it's about eight and a half feet below the surface. It runs through the dam. It looks to me the undermined area is down about four foot now. Eventually, it's going to undermine that sewer pipe. It's going to take it out, just like it's taking the dam out. We're ready to replace it. Dig it out, put the two pipes in, rebury it without, hopefully without hitting the sewer pipe that's in there. And once that's replaced, why, it should be good for many years. Like I say, this is the second time we've replaced that dam. There's 39 homeowners in the association. This will be our third dam replacement. At approximately $10,000 a dam. The problem still is with the water coming underneath Highway 30 from the development, the Novak Development. It's still, it's getting worse all the time, especially with the new building that's going up there. I don't know how many thousands of square feet of concrete that's going to drain. That's going into the pond. It's a hole, basically. It's not a pond. It's meant to be a pond, I believe, a holding area, which I think would be fine, would really help us out. But the problem is the outlet on that is at the very bottom of it. So it goes in, doesn't hold any water, it goes right out. And next time we get a gully washer, you know, it's probably going to take another foot out of our dam if it's not fixed. Another foot closer than the sewer pipe. I believe Travis said it's eight and a half feet down. I'm not sure.
You got anything to say, Travis?
I think it's deeper than that. I can't remember what it is exactly. That slope's down there pretty good from there, getting down to the lift station. So I don't think it's... I mean, ultimately, as far as that goes, it's an easement. If that dam goes out, we can break out, I mean, our pipe cheap enough to where I think it'd be less than what half of the cost would be that they're asking for.
But you don't think you're in any danger of that happening anytime in the near future?
I don't. I think they're going to lose their pond before we have any of that. I mean, Dave sat in here too and, you know, said that he's done the calculations and then the retention pond should hold what it's supposed to be. I'm not arguing with what he's saying at all. But if it's ultimately getting blamed on the retention pond being the cause of most of this, I can justify spending city money on verifying that that's it and that versus something on private property like this.
Yeah, that's the problem. I see it's private property. If our engineer says we did something wrong or we didn't design the retention pond large enough or properly, then I can see some fault on the city's part. But otherwise, it's, our hands are kind of tied to pay for something on private property.
And this would be the second time, right, Danny? So if we do say, yeah, we pay for it this time, we've already done it twice. There's nothing saying that this fix is going to be the ultimate fix. So we're kind of on the hook forever after that point, is the way I would see it.
Yeah. So the only way to see if that retention pond is doing what it's supposed to be doing is to run a study, right?
We've had Dave look at it a couple of times now. And because Novaks wanted him to look at it, if you remember then, and he checked with DNR and everybody else, and they said, no, it is built the way it's supposed to be built, and they would not allow us to change it.
It's kind of a natural waterway down through there anyway, right?
Because Novaks wanted us to raise it up, and they said, no, we cannot do that. It was designed for a certain reason, and it was built to that design. So Dave has checked into that. Since I've been here, he has, yeah.
Well...
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, you say that pond is designed for a certain reason. Why is it even there? Because the outlet is at the very bottom. In other words, you could, that pond could just be a, you could have a one-foot wall around it. Those pipes are only a couple of foot high. You could have a wall around that and say, okay, that's good enough. Why did they build a large, deep hole for a pond to retain that water in the first place then? Now, I know the city engineer said, well, the size of the outlet there is, okay, it's good enough for a 500-year flood. Well, I don't know. What I understand, Cedar Rapids, we've had 100-year floods, five in a row here. I don't know how many times. 500-year flood. It's just, and everything that's built over there increases the amount of water that we get. And when it comes, there's a five-foot diameter pipe that runs under Willow Lane to allow that water to come into our pond. Five-foot diameter pipe. That's a pretty big pipe. So all that water, they say, well, it's designed for it. Well, we can't keep up with the water. And it's tearing our dams up. And when it gets that much pressure on it, it just finds a place to go. I don't know. We've spent, like I say, the third time we put in a dam. And we can't afford to keep doing it. $30,000. The estimate I got on this dam is about $10,000. We're asking the city for about $5,000. I don't think we're going to hold the city responsible if it fails again. But we're trying to protect the city sewer line. At the same time, trying to make it safe. So we're putting the money. We didn't ask, we didn't ask the city for any money on the dam we put in two years ago below to protect the pump station that's down there, which was built after the dam went in. That pump station was put in right below our dam. And the city said, well, we don't like the integrity of your dam. Better fix it. And so we did. We fixed it at a cost of $10,000. We didn't ask the city for any money there. But you can't, you just can't keep replacing this. And this water is just, it's tearing these dams up. No matter what they say, we're still getting too much water in there. And we're going to get more with all the new building on Highway 30. So...
So Travis, how high is where it starts draining off that retention pond to go to the ponds?
I think we're below water level with that sewer line, if that's what you're asking.
No, no, no. Over behind like brothers and stuff. That pond there.
Yeah.
Okay, so when it drains, how far down? Is that like at the bottom of that valley?
There's an elevation difference, but I don't know. I can't remember what Dave's...
Because I mean, if it's at the bottom of it, I mean, that pond ain't doing anything.
Then it's just basically glorified to go in there.
Yeah, I mean, the pond ain't doing anything. But if it's up two feet or whatever?
Right. I'd have to ask Dave what the elevation is on it. And when they built that, what we was told is they went clear past, clear out to the train tracks is where, past the train tracks is all the watershed that that's supposed to go through there. That's why that five-foot culvert was there. That was all the builder. That wasn't the city doing it. This was all the builder. Same with that lift station. That's the second lift station, actually third, because we just rebuilt it for everything that's going down there. But that was all for that development. It's not like the city said, hey, let's, their pond's here, let's put this right here. That was all for their development. It wasn't our choice to put it right there. That's just, we said, yeah, that's fine, we'll accept it there. And I may be putting words in the past council's mouth, but that's what I'm assuming happened because it's ours now, and that's where it's at.
But I'm just saying, if that pipe's at the bottom of that valley, that it ain't doing nothing. It's just letting it go. It ain't holding anything back.
Slowing it down.
It's just slowing it down.
It would if you got a heavy enough rain that that pipe couldn't handle the outflow. Then the pond would start filling up. Correct?
Yes. Now, these are all, I mean, it's something that you probably should, if you want, have Dave revisit with you guys again, but...
Well, why would we pay to have him revisit if he's already revisited it before?
Well, we did get a bid if we were going to change it, didn't we? Remember when I wanted the, it says, didn't we talk to, somebody talk to us about that?
Change what?
Because I was complaining about there's never any water in it.
Oh, but there's, there's so many weeds, I mean, so much long grass, you can't tell the level of the water that's in there.
It's not really made to hold water.
It's made just to slow the water down.
Yeah. Because if it suddenly filled up, would it drain out in 24 hours or...?
Yeah, I forget what the...
They got a certain standard for, it's not made to hold the water back for a long period of time.
You see?
But if there was a downpour, say you got a five-inch rain, which we've had. I've seen that. What it does to those ponds, that fills them up, and we've got emergency spillways where we go over the top of the dam and off to the side where your pump station is. You got a five-inch rain. That, it'll fill, it'll go over both of those dams, over the top of them. And it'll come shooting out of there, those pipes, as fast as it possibly can. If they were raised just a few feet, that would allow a lot of that five-inch rain to sit there and, you know, before it, and fill up, and then start coming out gradually instead of all at once, like it's doing now. I don't think that's a big expense to raise that up. I just don't see it where, you know, you can raise it up and store a little bit with the water and let it, let it go out. Or even put a valve of some sort where you can release it a little at a time. I think it's great for normal rains, but look at the weather we've had. You know, we're getting all these wild weather patterns lately, and that's what we're worried about.
If we got an even heavier rain, it would, and we changed anything in the design, then I would assume it would fill up that retention pond and overflow.
Well, that would be...
What do you mean fill up the retention pond and overflow? I mean, if you, if that pipe, if you bring it up five inches, it's just going to fill that retention pond up five inches, and it's going to start overflowing. So if that pipe's at ground level, that retention pond ain't doing anything. It's just letting the water go.
Well, if you have a heavy enough rain, it would fill up the retention pond.
Well, it's going to fill up anything, a lot heavier rain. But I'm just saying that pipe ain't doing nothing if it's at ground level. It's not holding anything back.
It's not.
Why they call it retention pond then?
I think we need... Why has it got the big walls on it if it's not...
Well, I think there's two different issues. Because if you want to have the engineer look at the retention pond and see if there's anything to do differently there, that's one thing. But it's another thing to be paying for repairs on private property. So if you guys decide that you want to have the engineer look at it...
If that's at down at ground level, we might be...
I know what you're saying.
Some of that. Because of the design wrong.
I think...
But we've already had them look at that, and they've already said... That we're not. I mean, it's built to specs. It's built to the way it would be.
Yeah, Dave has checked that before at least once. And I think we need, next time Dave's here, maybe he could explain it better than I can, certainly.
I make a motion to deny the request.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Doug? Okay.
Just one quick thing here after that. Sent in here. Our street sign, blue down one on Highway 30, about two months ago.
Which street is it labeled?
It's Shade Tree Court.
Shade Tree Court.
And it laid there for like one day, and it went back and was gone. So I couldn't find it. Looked around and so forth. But we do need a street sign there, so...
It's on order.
Be nice for, you know, case handling or something.
Yeah, we weren't aware of it. I mean, Travis, we'll get one on order. Well, he said it's already on order. So, yeah, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 36-2019, approving 28E agreement with Lynn County for snow and maintenance.
I gave you guys some information on this a couple of months or so ago. Travis and I looked through it. We've talked with Jared from Lynn County, and we've came to a better agreement where it actually describes what they will do and what they won't do and what we have to do and we don't have to do. So we've got that all spelled out. So the only thing that I just wanted to make you guys aware of that right now Lynn County will be taking care of quite a bit more lane, whatever it's, miles or whatever of road than we are. But in the future, we will be taking over part of Highway 30. So it'll all balance out at that time. So right now, we're getting a better deal, but later on, we probably won't be. So just wanted you guys to know that this right now is not including our section of Highway 30 that we will take over whenever that time comes.
Okay, I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion is second. Travis?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Doug? Resolution 37-2019, approving city street financial report fiscal year 19.
This is a report that I'm required to do every year to send to the state, which tells them what we use our road use funds for.
Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Travis? Resolution 38-2019, certifying lane for non-payment of utility bills.
This is a rental property where the renter did not pay the bills, so then it would fall back on the landlord. Christina tried to collect from the landlord, and we did not get those funds. So now we will certify against the property tax. Motion to agree.
Second.
Motion is second. Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie? Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Okay. Any new business?
Not right now.
Correspondence?
The only correspondence I had was the monthly energy report, which shows our solar panels are doing a good job for the environment.
How many trees did it say? 156, something like that?
Yeah, that's quite a few.
Or last month?
It says that we, our carbon offset for this month was 6.08 tons, which is the equivalent of 156 trees.
Equivalent to what?
It's equivalent to 156 trees.
And no leaves. Pretty good. Okay. City engineer report? Public works director?
No, just working on Sauerkraut stuff.
Okay. Police chief's report? No?
Well, we got it.
Fire chief report? City administrator report?
I don't have much tonight. Just letting you know that all three projects that we've been doing the last few months have been wrapped up. So we're starting to get reimbursement checks back. So as you look on the treasury report, the last two months, we were kind of low in funds, but those monies are starting to come back now. And then, of course, September will be a good month for property tax. So those numbers will bring our funds back up. Starting to work, I'm going to be meeting with the civil engineer that I was working with on our sports complex. So we're going to start looking at Phase 1, which will be just the soccer field area. The property will become ours fully to do something with in September of 2020. So I want to start planning ahead so we know where the funds are going to come from and how we're going to be able to do that. Luckily, the first phase of that project won't be as expensive as the second or third phase because this is going to be mainly soccer fields. Nothing will be done in time for next year's soccer, but hopefully maybe 2021, we'll be ready to play soccer on our own fields. And then I'm beginning to look at the waterline project, which I'm sure is a bad word to everybody after going through the sewer project. Hopefully, everybody's forgot all about those delays and... Right up until you reminded of them just now. Yeah. So Travis and the guys will be starting on Second Avenue after Sauerkraut Days, and we get everything else wrapped up. See how that goes. And then if that goes well, then we can look at some of the other sections of that project that they can do on their own and save the larger streets and the worst areas for the project itself. They're plugging away on the sidewalk at the Boys Diamond. About halfway done, maybe? Looking good. They're doing a very good job. So once they finish that, we're going to start on the sidewalk on Walter Street in the cul-de-sac. There's a sidewalk from the cul-de-sac that goes out over to Gillette Lane. So once that, it's our park area that was donated to us by Novaks when they did that development. So the whole section will be complete there. So we're going to do that section ourselves. So doing a lot of stuff in-house now that we've got an extra person, so we're real happy. happy about that.
You're gonna have to tell me where that sidewalk is over at the park, unless Coleman sent me over there on a false sign. Did you just start on that?
Yeah, we started on it.
Down by the concession stand.
Yeah.
Down by the concession stand.
I didn't see it.
Between Diamond and...
I'll go back. It's not right at the concession stand right now, they still have that piece to do, but by the bleachers behind home plate, they've got two different platforms that can be used for handicapped and lawn chairs, and then they've got connections to that, so the next phase they're gonna be working on would be from the set of bleachers on the first base line to the concession stand.
Good work.
You've gotta walk by home plate, you'll see it.
I wasn't walking, that's probably a problem.
Yeah, you have to get out of your vehicle to see it.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, mayor's report. Well, I went over to look at the buildings, the barns, and that, there's an electric fence, so I didn't even get in there. I probably could walk up and go clear around, but I'm not walking again.
Are you sure? Because you can't have electric fences in town.
What kind of fences?
It's just a wire fence.
It's just a wire fence.
Just a smooth wire fence.
Just to make sure people don't...
Yeah, can't be you.
I scared to death that was an electric fence.
Cannot have electric fences in town.
Okay.
What's sure about that?
Not sure.
Okay.
Nope, don't even get any ideas.
There's one right behind my house.
Oh, that sag over there.
But my house is residential.
Interesting.
Isn't it though?
Council report. Travis?
I don't have anything.
Stephanie?
No.
John?
In the article in the paper about the ribbon cutting, citing a $375,000 overrun on this building, I know Connie provided those figures, and that's what she found, but I was on the committee all that time, and I thought that was very misleading. I remember on the committee, we wanted to hold it to less than a million dollars, and then with all the needs that the different members of the committee came up with, it was gonna run, I felt, you know, a million or a little more. And we did have some cost overruns for various reasons, but we didn't have a general contractor, so we didn't have that bid from a general contractor, and then saying the overage was over that. We had separate contracts with each of the people that were involved, the plumbers, the electricians, and so on, and the council passed on each of those, and it went out for bid on each area, and that's kind of the deceptive part, we didn't have a fixed figure to work off of. So it did run over, but we had other people look at the building that were familiar with construction far more than I, and said that this building, if you had a general contractor, could run up close to $2 million. So looking at it from that way, we still saved money over having a general contractor do it. And we did have problems, admit that. And Southeastland, I'm finding that some people still don't know that the services that are provided there, one that came up recently, they still have congregant meals, not too many people attending those, but we still deliver meals too in both Mount Vernon and Lisbon area, and we still have several, and it's just a nominal figure, I think it's three or 350 per meal, and it's a voluntary suggested price, so if a person can't afford it, they don't have to put money in the box for their meal.
That's all I'll bore you with for tonight.
Everybody have fun at South Crowe days.
Okay, anything else? Anything else?
I think there's something wrong with the charge.
Did it come up?
Came up, but if it's not plugged in...
That's the only thing that sucks about...
It's not keeping a charge, that might be one of the reasons. It's not keeping a charge, so it's... Right, and this one here, it's dead.
Yeah, no, I figured you were busy.
So I don't know...
I was just coming back from the farm checking fence line.
Bad battery in it, or something like that, but it's not reading as it's even plugged in right now.